Hi, Yell.
Okay, it's 7:00 PM. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for a public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Please note for the record that Mr. Semt is here, Mr. Staley is here, Ms. Petuski is here. Absent is our regular member Harold Watson, whose partner passed away recently and is unable to be here, and Mr. Vigliotti, who's a schoolteacher and he's on vacation. We do not have any alternates sitting in place of any of our regular members. Before calling for the first petition, I would like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of this commission to have questions of the petition or directed through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on March 6th, March 13th, April 3rd, and April 10th. These properties were duly posted on March 26th and April 10th. Before we get started with the first item for the public hearing, I'd like to have a motion to waive the rules and to start with 175 Patricia Drive, if someone would.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Mr. Staley, seconded by Mr. Semt. Okay.
Yeah, we'll just read it in. One of them can read it in before we start. Be ready. First thing right here, you can ask one of them. They'd be going to read it in.
Okay. If one of you, Mr. Semt maybe, could read off the, what we're hearing first, which is continued item number two on your agenda for the record. Yeah?
This is 175 Patricia Drive, petition of East Coast Demolition Corporation to subdivide subject property into four lots.
Madam Secretary, Madam Chairman, gentlemen of the Planning Commission, Mr. Bansky, Mr. Administrator, I am going to ask this commission to do respectfully two things tonight. One, I'm going to ask you to continue this petition. Reason number one is that after we filed the initial application a month or so ago, it was discovered upon a review of the petition that there might be some questions regarding critters, and we were asked to notify DEEP. We did send correspondence to DEEP, and they sent back a letter, and they've asked us to do a little bit more research, and they will in turn send us correspondence. Quite frankly, I thought it would take more than two or three months to get an answer from DEEP, but they answered promptly, but we just didn't have enough time to supply the commission with that information. That's item number one. Item number two, obviously I noticed you don't have a full contingent of members this evening, therefore I am requesting that this get continued. Open the public hearing, continue it to the next public hearing. And based on that, I am also requesting that commission waive the $250 fee for continuing the application since you don't have a full contingent of members. And with that, I have nothing else to add. I thank you.
We do have a quorum, so the waiving of the $250 is in question.
Having said that, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to waive it, only because it's being brought forward to a future date, and I think they've been responsible, according to the documents, moving forward, getting the proper...
Okay, so your motion is to approve the continuance and to waive the $250 fee?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. All, since we have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
May 21st?
May 21st, correct.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So, the next petition, Mr. Staley, if you could read that, it's on the agenda number one.
Okay, the next item is 207 Grove Street, Ryan J.D. Properties LLC, to revoke Misty Blue Home subdivision approval previously received by Mr., by Misty Blue LLC on December 15th, 2015.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Knott, you are representing the petitioner?
I am.
Okay. Have you submitted your certification on mailing to the...
I just handed them to Mr. Staley with the maps.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, shall I proceed, Madam Chairman?
Please do.
My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of Ryan J.D. Properties LLC of 177 Grove Street, Stratford. I have sort of submitted the certificates of mailing.
They sent me off.
Now, I want to describe this petition, because this is a very unusual petition. This is a petition for a one-lot subdivision, which is being submitted in order to undo and void a four-lot subdivision known as Misty Blue Home, approved for Misty Blue LLC on December 15th, 2015, on 2.7 acres of property located at 207 Grove Street. The applicant's intention tonight is to eliminate the interior lot lines depicted on the approved subdivision map and combine the areas into one new lot with a single net area of 121,487 square feet, or 2.7889 acres. Now, if you look at Exhibit 1, Exhibit 1 is a copy of the subdivision map that we got approved in 2015. And you can see that I've highlighted in yellow the lot numbers on each lot, and I've outlined in green the individual lots that were approved at that time. You will note that lots 1, 2, 4, and 5 were the lots that were subject to the original subdivision approval, and that Lot 2 on that map was a lot designation for a separate house next door at 177 Grove Street, which was not part of the original subdivision. Therefore, 177 Grove Street is not part of tonight's presentation, because 177 Grove Street is a separate parcel. It just happened to have been owned by the same people at the time we got the original subdivision. So Exhibit 1 is what we got approved, and you can see that with the exception of 177 Grove Street, there's four other lots, 1, 3, 4, and 5. Now, if you look at Exhibit 2, that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. And I will bet any amount of money that you have never seen a subdivision application go from four lots back to one lot, and I don't think you ever will for as long as it sits on the street. So if you look at Exhibit 2, this is what we're asking you to approve. So you still have the house at 177 Grove Street, which was a separate parcel, and then Lot 1, instead of being four lots, is now one lot that's got 2.788 acres. Now, you will notice that around the perimeter of this property, there are diagonal lines 30 feet wide. They represent a conservation easement that we were required to put on the property when we got the original subdivision application. And when we recorded the subdivision map, we had to record the conservation easement as well. Now, that conservation easement is now cast in concrete. It's on the land records in perpetuity. We're not asking that that conservation easement be released at this time. So the conservation easement will remain. And that 30-foot strip was created in order to protect the tidal wetlands that run around three sides of this property from any incursion by development on the site itself. But that site, that conservation easement will remain, and what it says essentially is no construction activity within the 30 feet, no cutting of trees, leave it in its natural state, don't even go in there. So that's going to remain. Now, why is my client doing what he's doing? The original subdivision was requested by an entity known as Misty Blue LLC, which owned the property at the time of the subdivision approval in 2015. It was later determined by that application, that by that applicant and other developers who looked at the property for potential development, that the cost of home construction on the approved lots was going to be unusually high because of the very sandy soil on site that needed structural support in order to be able to hold the house. And that structural report, support was going to be expensive. Secondly, the elevation of the houses vis-à-vis Grove Street, the houses' elevation were going to be below Grove Street, so each house would require a pump-up station to get to the sanitary sewers on Grove Street with a backup generator for each house. So once again, that was an exceptional cost. So the original owners, they got the subdivision approval, sold the property to my client, the people I'm here on tonight. And when they, when my client looked at the property, they determined that there was more potential value in renovating the two existing houses than there was in developing these three other new houses on the site because of the fact it was such a difficult site. So it's for this reason that my client is seeking to undo the original subdivision approval and return the property to its original state. Now, if you look at Exhibit 1, without going into any great detail, the original subdivision approval, lots 3, 4, and 5 were going to be serviced by underground utilities in favor of the town of Stratford leading into the subdivision from Grove Street for about 100 feet into the parcel, to allow those three interior lots, 3, 4, and 5, to be serviced by municipal sewers and other utilities. Now that those three interior lots are being eliminated, that underground utility easement in favor of the town is no longer necessary, and assuming this application is approved, I will be working with the town attorney's office to obtain a release of those underground utility easements because they're not necessary any longer. Now, obviously, it's extremely unusual for an applicant to come into you in order to convert four lots into one. It's always been the other way around. However, for the reasons that I've stated here, this is what my client wishes to do, and I've spoken to neighbors who are immediately affected by this application, and they are delighted that the property is going back to its original state and character. Now, this application requires three votes for approval, and there's only three of you here tonight. I cannot imagine why, a reason why anybody would vote no on this application, but if one of you should feel so inclined, I would ask that you table the application rather than have it go down due to one no vote out of three, and then have it continue to the next meeting when there'll be five commissioners here, and we'll have a chance to have five people look at it. But assuming that you see this application, as I do, as a benefit to the neighborhood, I would ask that it be approved tonight on a vote of 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Okay, next, are there any members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. Any questions of Mr. Knott? Mr. Staley?
I have a question. Jay, you might be helpful here. The, Mr. Knott stated that they want to go back to the two existing homes for the one lot.
No, no, there's one house at 177 Grove Street.
Right.
That's that little rectangular lot.
Right.
And then there's another house at 207 Grove Street on the 2.7 acre lot.
All right, so that's the only one?
Yeah. Those lots exist now. I mean, excuse me, those houses exist.
You did say renovating the two existing.
Yeah, 177 Grove and 207 Grove.
Okay, nothing else?
No.
And I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Knott?
Yes?
How is this taxed right now? The property? Is it taxed as four or five different lots?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, because as a matter of fact, there's an inquiry going on with respect to the taxation. The title searcher, I didn't represent my client when he bought the property. Another lawyer did, and a title search was done by, and a title insurance policy was written. That title searcher shows one tax bill for 177 and one tax bill for 207, okay? Subsequently, there appears to be three other tax bills having been issued for the three raw lots that are on the subdivision. Now, the title searcher didn't pick up that separation, and my client was not aware of the separation, so they're looking into it right now. So there's either two tax bills, or there's five tax bills, and we're going to get to the bottom of it.
So if there's two tax bills instead of five, is it, the taxes lower to the town? In other words, the town would get less taxes if it's two lots as opposed to five lots?
Yes, correct. That's right.
And I'm sorry, you said that the town was going to come in and put in the utilities, or?
There, in order to get sewers to houses that were going to be built on lots 3, 4, and 5, which are the interior lots, we needed to bring underground utilities from Grove Street up the driveway approximately 100 feet, including sanitary sewers, and that's where the houses were going to tie into the sanitary sewers. So because we were bringing the town's sanitary sewers 100 feet onto the property, we had to give the town a sanitary sewer easement. And that's what I'll get released when the subdivision gets undone.
Okay. So that would have been paid for by the company, Misty Blue?
Exactly.
Okay.
But the sewers were never installed, anyway, so.
Right, right. No, I understand. Any other questions from the...
Thank you.
You have a question for Jay? You're on.
Jay, the, going back to one lot, which is close to four acres, I believe?
2.7.
Oh, 2.7, close to three. The, if this house in the future, one year and a day, is demolished, would there be medium-density allowance there for two, four-unit buildings for each acre?
No. You wouldn't be able to build anything other than single-family homes in this zone, because it's a single-family zone.
Okay, because I thought it was medium-density.
Nope, it would be, it's a, it's the most relaxed of all the single-family zones, which means you're allowed smaller lots. So, I mean, essentially, if this gets approved and we go back to one 2.7 acre lot, it could essentially be re-subdivided to do something similar to what they're trying to undo in the future. You never know.
Right. Thank you.
Just clarification on the three votes. So first vote would be to void the existing subdivision?
The vote would be to approve the...
The voidance?
The rescinding or the, I just got to look at the language exactly how it was advertised.
I think we're just going to vote to approve the property consolidation plan...
Yeah.
Which is Exhibit 2.
Yep.
Because in my application, I set forth all of the reasons that I just explained to you. So all you have to do is approve the Exhibit 2, which is the property...
Yeah, that voids it. And, Mr. Semt, I think the language that Attorney Knott presented to approve the consolidation of the lots as presented in Exhibit Number 2 would be a good way to cover yourself.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we're still in the public hearing.
Ooh.
Little premature there.
Just moving along.
I know, moving along. Okay, no more questions, then I'll ask the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observation from those who are neither in favor or opposition to the petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition, but who wishes to provide comments on the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to, is neither in favor nor in opposition, but who wishes to provide comments on the petition? Hearing none, a motion is in order to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Second by Mr. Staley. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded that the public hearing on the petition be closed and tabled for further consideration, all in, well, we did that, all in favor. The petitioner will be notified of the commission's decision by mail. Okay, a motion is in order to recess to administrative session. Can I have a motion? Mr. Staley? You going to go back and forth? Mr. Staley, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll go into the administrative session. I think I did that. That's actually better. It is. I can follow that. Okay, so now we're going to...
You don't want this mentioned. You don't want this grabbed, huh?
No. I don't think so.
Well, you should.
I should. Okay, we'll get started on the commission work agenda for April 16th, and first item on the agenda which we have to take off the table is 207 Grove Street.
I make a motion to take it off the table.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Semt, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Okay. Now, Mr. Staley, would you like to make a motion?
You want to approve the consolidation of the lots?
Oh, I thought Mr. Staley...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion based on Jay's experience and input on avoiding that and approving the one lot.
No, there's none from the, from the staff. I think the, you know, the applicant's going to work to remove the easement. That's not something that I think that's necessary to even condition as a part of this approval. And, you know, based on the town planner who's absent this evening, her thorough comments, I wholeheartedly agree with in that I recommend this application for approval.
Okay, so we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposed? You have your 3-0 vote.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks. Okay, now we don't have to do anything on Patricia. Okay. So, moving right along on our agenda, first up is the approval of the amended minutes for March 19, 2019. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Semt made the motion. Mr. Staley seconded. I just have a couple of things on who people are, as far as he's or she's. William Boyd is a he. You can have this. Mr. Jay Rico is a she, and Roseanne Neary is a she. Other than that, if you don't mind those amendments, first and second, we can vote on approval of the minutes.
I so move that the changes be made, and I approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So approval of minutes, okay. Zoning referral, we have a petition of the Stratford Zoning Commission to create a new Section 7.1.8 in zoning regulations to allow office uses as of right in commercial zones. And Jay, maybe you want to, because that's coming out of your office, correct?
So I know this was sent to the Planning Commission maybe sometime in February, although, and it sounded like that there was a favorable response to approving this. This is an application that came out of our office. You know, as our zoning enforcement officer does letters of zoning compliance for commercial uses in commercial zones, financiers often require this letter of zoning compliance that says the use is legal in conforming or non-conforming in that particular zone. And typically, when a lender hears non-conforming, they often get nervous, and it makes it quite difficult for a project that we might want or that we know is consistent with that type of zone. And in the zoning regulations, we have incremental zoning. Without going into too much detail, there, although the town has always, and I would, I would even, I would even speculate that almost any town allows for office uses in commercial zones, and the town of Stratford has always done so as well. However, there does seem to be a bit of ambiguity in the, in the text, and so we wanted to help eliminate some of that unclarity, especially for staff when they're doing their letters of zoning compliance, and also to make it quite clear what uses are permitted and which ones are not in commercial zones. Based on the proposed text, I feel that the application, or the proposed text amendment is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in the following ways. One, it updates the town of Stratford zoning code to reflect land use plan that will provide increased development opportunities in appropriate areas, protect character neighborhoods, and to maintain the town's waterfront and open spaces. I feel that the amendment, the amended regulation is consistent with that POCD action step. Number two, to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability, we also feel that this regulation would fulfill this POCD objective. And for the zoning commission, if they choose to approve this in a few weeks, I've recommended the two following standard conditions of approval for text amendment. One, setting the date of effectiveness, and two, that the reason for adoption is its consistency with the plan of conservation and development. And with that, if anyone has any questions, be happy to answer.
Was this like something that just came up or passed oversight? I don't understand why the, you couldn't have an office in a commercial zone.
Well, you could, and the town has always interpreted it as such, but zoning regulations are interpretive. I'll be the first person to say that. That's what my job is essentially, to interpret something until someone disagrees with me, and then it goes to the zoning board of appeals to interpret. It's just, I feel like there, one of the problems with our zoning regulations is they're either long-winded or confusing. And they'll point to say, instead of saying office uses are permitted in a commercial zone, it'll say, please refer to Section 4.2.4. And then you go there, and it says, this is permitted subject to these uses in 7.2.4, and you're bouncing all over when, you know, to make it more readable, more understandable for just anybody who's looking to try to figure out if they can do something rather than hire a land use attorney. do something rather than hire a land use attorney who's quite expensive, this would help, this would help aid in that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Discussion? Motion? Mr. Semt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we send with a, to zoning with a favorable recommendation to create a new section 7.1.8 in zoning regulations to allow office uses as of right in commercial C A zones, to include, as Jay recommended, date and also consistency, I believe, of, of the uses.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so that's. Do you know what this thing is?
So the applicant for 821 Wood End Road has requested, and this is not on the agenda. So after I explain what, what this extension request is, I'll let you folks determine how you want to handle this. And I'll, if you want, I can lay out the options for you. They're, they're required within 90 days of the subdivision approval to file that Mylar, which is essentially the map at the town clerk's office. They're requesting an extension of that filing, and I can tell you, the reason for their request for the extension is that they wanted to come back and rescind some of the approvals, which, they came back last month for that? To rescind one of the conditions of approval?
I think it was last month.
Okay.
No.
Or maybe.
Where's our minutes? I think maybe it was the month before. I think it was the month before.
Okay. And that's essentially why they're, because they were playing out either an appeal in case that didn't get approved by you all, or assuming that that would get approved, that delayed the filing of this Mylar. Now, you can either waive the rules to add that to this agenda, or you can wait until next month and handle it next month, which would still, you know, their request is still in. It would not jeopardize them next month if you decided that you wanted to wait to vote. And I will leave that up to your discretion as to how you'd like to handle that.
Mr. Staley?
What would be the waiting for? They're, they're going back, and they're getting information, and they're gonna supply the Mylar. What is, why, why would we wait?
Well, we would wait. Typically, we wouldn't discuss or vote on any items that aren't on the agenda.
Right.
And given the fact that there's three voting members here, some, some commissions like to take action when there's a full board. Some of them don't like to waive the rules when there's not a full board. I personally don't have a problem with this, but with whichever direction you decide, but I would just say that, you know, the safe conservative bet would be to hold off and to wait until next month. But.
Thank you.
It's not a.
Nope.
We can choose.
This is informal discussion.
Yeah. Okay. There you go. Yeah. Okay, moving along, there's no campsite plan review, no 824 review. Any further discussion on the 5.3 zoning regulations and the update to the C D B G grant and affordable housing study? Anything on that?
I, I don't have anything. I was, I was under the impression that you, that Chairman Petuski attended the C V G meeting hosted by the town council, and that you might be providing some updates.
I did attend it. Unfortunately, I was held to my three minutes, and I couldn't get to this in my three minutes, so it didn't happen. But I also know that they have not passed the C D B G, or they didn't that evening.
And I can just give a brief update. The town planner who, I have assigned the affordability plan and affordability study for the town, she put together two very thorough applications and well-thought-out applications for C D B G funding, which essentially is improvements in some of our lower-income neighborhoods, and to try to make some improvements in there in affordability planning. That's right in the sweet spot of eligibility for C D B G. During the initial round with the C D B G committee, our applications were presented. However, unfortunately, we were not selected. Ultimately, they give a recommendation to the town council, so I think Chairman Petuski went there to advocate one last time for our applications, which are of critical importance to the town moving forward in making sure that we have an affordable town. And also, the other application that we had had to do with outreach regarding sea level rise, coastal flooding, mainly with our C R S program. What we wanted to do is put some flyers in the tax bills this year. One, we get credit for our C R S eligibility with that, which reduces flood insurance premiums for anyone in the flood zones, approximately 5,000 properties. So, big, you know, a big impact for folks here in town. And so neither one of those applications were given, were recommended, but it sounds like they still haven't voted yet, so you never know. There's still a chance.
You never know.
But thank you for attempting to go. We appreciate it.
Mr. Staley?
Yes. The, Jay, the reduction in cost in the flood zone areas, is there a percentage?
There is. We have been given the tentative score out of eight, of eight out of 10, which is one of the highest scores in the state. And that is, although we don't get our official score from FEMA until, I believe it's May 5th, I think it's May 5th. At that point, as soon as, if we know that we're an eight, it's gonna be anywhere between 10 to 15 percent reduction in flood insurance premiums totaling approximately $250,000 townwide.
Okay, so this also is individual homes in flood zones?
Homes, commercial businesses. You know, it's, it's a big economic development selling point.
Yep.
For, not only for homeowners to want to move into Stratford, but also for businesses to move into, you know, Lordship Boulevard, which is a flood-prone area.
So we'll know this May 5th?
I believe it's May 5th. I don't remember the exact date.
Oh, close to it. Thank you very much.
Yep, we're supposed to know in May.
Good. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to erosion and sediment control plan, which there's nothing for. Bond release requests, nothing for. Implementation plans, the Greenway project.
So Susmita, I'm sorry, the town planner had mentioned that Commissioner Watson was gonna be giving an update. I was not at that meeting. I know there were some extensive comments from the town engineer, as well as from our consultants from B S C, who are doing a fine job. You know, I, I see that we have a few pages of notes, and so I won't read, read through them, but many of them had to do with some of the challenges that, or not challenges, but the finer details of the Greenway planning project. You know, landscaping, tree selections, wayfinding signage, some of those details that go through this app, go through this thing, the planning process. So, you know, I, rather than read through all this, what I'll do is, if you'd rather save your comments for Susmita for when she returns, or I can answer some general questions if I can.
E. I know we had quite a bit here. If no one has a problem, maybe we should wait till the next meeting, because I'm sure the town planner and Harold Watson will probably have a lot of input on that. Okay, nothing on complete streets or coastal resiliency?
The complete streets program, we are currently working with G B T. And again, this is, this project has been assigned to the town planner. She's, you know, her and I have both been working with our consultant, B S C, into tying in the Greenway that's currently being designed, as well as, you know, our pilot project through Stratford Center. And the phase that we're currently at right now, they, well, they just finished the preliminary surveying, which is the first step to know where everything is. And we're currently working with G B T. We've been meeting with them over the past two months to sort out bus queuing, bicycle queuing at intersections, and hopefully planning one of their brand-new, never been unveiled bus stations, or not bus station, bus stop that is beyond cutting edge. I mean, we haven't seen anything like them here in Connecticut, so we're, they're, they're really excited to see this high-profile project running right through Stratford Center. So we're excited about what we're, some of our discussions, and happy, or we look forward to showing everyone.
Is there a timetable on that?
Two months ago.
Oh, okay. So any day now?
Yeah, no, I know that their, G B T's lead planner has been out on paternity leave. So he just got back. We met with him la, last, last Friday, and so we've gotten all of our comments over to the consultant, and we're just synthesizing everything right now. So maybe a couple of weeks.
Okay. Okay. Other items, digital sign draft ordinance, which is attachment F. If you remember, the town planner was going to try to get this into a more readable, shorter version that would then not, not be approved as in a final ordinance, but approved to the point where she could then take it to the various departments for their input. So we're not looking at this to approve it tonight, just to send it on to, as I said, the various departments. So I don't know if you have any questions regarding, yes, Mr. Staley?
Yes, I do. I think I was in the beginning of this. And you did a good job. I, I was a little confused. I thought we were at first only talking about two properties the town worked with. And then it went into the whole digital signage for the town. This has been reduced substantially. And I do have some questions. And I can meet with the planning administrator and go over those questions with her.
If you want, or maybe Jay could answer some of them?
Well, there's quite a few.
Oh.
I'm detailed. The, okay, so you have, that is mounted on the ground and covering not more than 50 percent of the area of the ground sign. So this is assuming the sign be on four-by-fours, six-by-sixes, or stone.
Right.
50 percent of the outside borders of the screen or digital sign? Can't be more than 50 percent of the area it's on? I'm not sure. I'm a little confused with that one. I can stop in.
You want to do that?
So I would interpret this as that they, it's, it's a little confusing, I'll be honest. Electronic sign mounted on the ground. If some, do you have an idea as to where we went, where, what the direction was with that?
Not that part.
Okay.
I, I also had some questions myself. Maybe we should table it for now. And Mr. Staley, if you could get your questions to Susmita. Mr. Semt, if you have any, and I'll send whatever questions I have, and that way she can take another quick pass at it.
Thank you.
How's that sound? Do you have to have a motion for that? I, I do like the fact that it got down to a lot less than what we had last month. But yeah, and basically, it looks pretty good. But yeah, let's get all our questions in, and then we can pass it on to the other departments. We had a text amendment for section 4.1.3 to allow a commercial kitchen in a private residence. That's actually on the table, so unless someone wants to take it off the table, we can leave it on the table. Till, I, I think that would be good, because I think our town planner has more information than we have.
No, I would agree. I just think there's too many variables that we need to discuss before we can move forward with it. So I agree.
Okay, then we have the MetroCog bike share. I guess there's no update on that at the moment?
The only thing I would say, I just got back from Texas. I was in Austin. And, you know, obviously, you know, a city's a little different than a town, but they actually have scooters that get people from place to place.
Really?
Motorized scooters, which is pretty neat. And you can pick them up on any corner, which I think is, is pretty cool. And they've got an app that you put your phone up against, and it automatically bills you out. And so I know our discussion was with, with bicycles, which I think would be a little safer than some of these scooters. Scooters go relatively fast. So I think it's something that we should definitely, definitely consider, especially with the, the train and access to the train and some of the people that like to commute. I think it's a good option for us to have, and I think we should definitely look into, look into that.
Maybe you can pass that on to the town planner?
I will. And, and the one thing that I will add, and I had this, is just in passing conversation with the executive director at MetroCog, is that, you know, part of the reason that the town of Stratford was selected from all the other municipalities that applied for this is all the work that we're, that we're doing, both town staff, the planning commission, and all the other commissions here, working on the complete streets, on the Greenway committees. So, you know, those long-range planning programs, they have a ripple effect in becoming more attractive to be selected for these types of programs at no cost to the town, which is, which is great. So.
I think it's a really good idea to look into, even looking at.
We're definitely seeing more and more communities with, you know, having access to it, and I think it's, it's great.
Okay, the other item that actually I had asked to be added was the discussion of the Shakespeare property. As we all know, the theater was burnt down, and fortunately, the perpetrators were apprehended, which was nice work on our police department. So, but moving along, if, if you, I don't know if anyone's been down there. They basically have cleaned up the entire area, and it's been, it has.
Grass.
I don't know if it's gra, it's.
It's grass.
Looks black, so I guess.
Well, no, they just.
It'll grow.
They graded it, and the grass is gonna grow, yeah. It was down there.
So that's where it's at. But the town planner has had two meetings so far to discuss ideas for the property. And I thought as a planning commission, it may be something that we might want to weigh in on. And I asked the town planner to also give you a copy of the zoning regulations for the theater district, just for, you know, information of what can go there, what can't go there, and so on. So I didn't know if anyone has any comments that.
I do have a question. How, how much of a participant will this commission be in that decision process? You know, if they decide that they want to put another structure up there, do they have to come before us before that happens? How's that, how does that work?
So this would come before, you know, anything, any significant investment in town-owned property requires an 824 review, which is subject to the recommendation. I mean, you folks don't have, the planning commission doesn't have the final say, but you get to give a favorable, favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the town council based on whatever the plan ends up being.
So we probably should try to be active participants in some of these meetings. Not in active meaning at least, show up.
Show up.
And get, get the feel for the, for the community.
Yeah, that would be good.
And the next ones at both? Is the next one at both?
I think so.
Yeah, I'll be there.
The 24th?
Yes. And what I would recommend that if you do go, to separate yourselves so that you don't create a Freedom of Information Act issue with meetings. you don't create a Freedom of Information Act issue with meetings, or having a quorum, and...
We can't sit together in other words.
And since you're gonna, there's a potential that you will be voting on something to do with this project, that you listen.
Right.
And not make any comments.
Gotcha.
To listen.
Okay.
I think that will, I mean, you all have your rights as citizens, but you wouldn't want to jeopardize any of your actions six months from now, a year from now. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
So, we couldn't as a, as a commission, send on any recommendations to that committee?
Well, you certainly, you certainly could as a commission.
Yeah.
But I would be hesitant to do it individually at a public meeting.
Okay. Mr. Staley?
Outside of this forum, I should say.
Yeah, okay.
Looking at the map, we're talking about a theater district. And I was, I didn't know that it went down Ferry Boulevard, across Ferry Boulevard, into some existing businesses and so forth.
It doesn't. This is an old, this is an old map. I know the town planner has been digging through boxes in boxes of Shakespeare Theater planning studies. It's actually, if you're looking here, it basically comes down Stratford Avenue and encompasses this parcel here. So this was one of the proposed boundaries, but it ended up being essentially this.
Oh, okay.
So it's much smaller than this. And I did a, just a, a very preliminary overview of the theater district. From the zoning commission requested me to put together a little two-page report, which I did, and I'd be happy to share that with the planning commission, and you folks can take a look at it and see. And it really just lays out what could go, what could go there as of right tomorrow, based on the regulations.
Okay, so, my question? After that, knowing it cuts off, the existing C A commercial, is this all going to become one zoning district by the theater district?
Well, that's, it's unknown. Right now, the zone, the overlay zone, which is essentially this zone that floats over the base zone, which is all residential, this is all residential here, and the town created this overlay zone, which allowed certain activity just at targeted location. So right now, there are no plans to change any of it, at least from, from my office's perspective, we've got, I mean, that would require a few months of public hearings. The planning commission would look if there was any zone changes or text amendments that would come through, just the way any text amendment would, and you all would have, have a look at it. So, but ultimately, what, what happens, I don't know. And I think it's going to take a few months of looking at all the data points that we get from all the, all the meetings we've held, and see, see what's viable.
If you look on page ninety-one of this, it shows you some of the permitted uses of, you know, of the theater, no, what, what is permitted in what is called the theater One-family dwellings, home occupation office, bed and breakfast, what else? Theatrical school or college, theater for live performance, museum or art gallery, hotel or inn of no more than twenty-five rooms per building, and a dining facility with no more than seventy-five seats. And then later on, it goes into what is not allowed. So, you know, those are some of the options according to the ordinance. But from a planning commission perspective, and I don't, we don't have to do it today, because I know we only have three members, and I think it would be an interesting discussion to, regarding what, as planners, or the planning commission, what we might recommend, if we could come to an agreement, you know, of all five of us, so that it's not, it's being a little bit more proactive than reactive, you know, this is what we would like to see, as opposed to them telling us, well, this is what we are going to do. Now, we can also go to those meetings and listen to the public as well, to get an idea. So maybe we can hold this off until all five of us are here, and have a good discussion regarding the theater. Okay, is there anything else? I don't, are there any member comments and, or concerns? No? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You may. Okay, second?
I'd like to second.
Okay, all in favors?
Aye.
Say aye? Aye. Okay, we are adjourned as of seven fifty-five.